I'd like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Adams to lead us in an invocation, followed by the pledge by Vice Mayor Kavas. If you all like to stand and join us, you may do so.
Our God, my Father, we are grateful for the opportunity we have to meet as a community, as a council, in this beautiful area that we enjoy. We're grateful that we have been blessed to live in such a wonderful area. And we are thankful for all those staff and community members who help our area to look nice and to be a nice place for people to visit. We are grateful for all of our blessings. We pray, Father, for moisture. We desperately need moisture in our lands, and we pray that thou will bless us with rain that we need. We're grateful for the men and women who, law enforcement and services, who provide safety for our community. And we ask you to please be with them. We say this thing in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Vice Mayor Kavas, appreciate that. Thank you all for joining us tonight. First item on the agenda is call to the public.
Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole, and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of city council. Pursuant to the Arizona open meeting law, the city council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual city council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review the matter, and ask that the matter be put on a future agenda.
Thanks, City Attorney. I do have one, Mr. Terracini. Get your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Gordon Terracini, 60th Avenue, 33rd Avenue, longtime resident, getting to be an old timer, as some might say. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm pleased to see that the stage one fire restrictions are in place, which is a relief for all of us. But anyway, last week, while driving north on Central Avenue from Whipple, going towards Deuce of Clubs, I did see the crack sealing crew up the street. It's a wonderful thing that they preserve our streets. What I did not see was any sort of slow sign, stop sign, or the two-man crew waving red flags to warn drivers to slow down and go around. To me, that's an unsafe condition. It is a rather dangerous condition on a street like Central Avenue, as busy as it is. In a neighborhood street with little or no traffic, that might be okay. So I have to ask, where's the safety for the crew, you know, on a busy roadway like that? Where's the common sense for safety for the crew that's out there working in the roadways? I should have taken a couple photos that day to show the council what I saw and witnessed. I do hope that this is not a common practice while working our roadway easements around town. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Gordon, and I totally agree with you. We can have City Attorney look into that for sure. Thank you, Gordon. Appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda, special events presentation by Navajo County Sheriff's Office. I'll turn it over to Sheriff Klaus.
Thank you, Gordon. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Good to be here with you. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes of your agenda tonight. It is 2025. I think this is the third or fourth year that we have done this as a sheriff's office. I appreciate you guys allowing us to come back, kind of make this tradition, but more so a report. And the reason that we do this, just to kind of recap, is we obviously work very closely. We share office space, building space, not only with the city, but the police department. And many of our operations, law enforcement operations, maybe start in the city, come into the, or, and then go into the county and vice versa. And more importantly, we have many shared operations, shared services as far as our dispatch, task forces, communications, SRT, and many others. And so I feel an obligation to report back to you, although there's not this written or law obligation that we have to come back and report to the cities, but means that we work with your chief of police and your city manager and ask for shared budget items. You deserve a report back on what those are being spent on and how those operations are going. I know the chief reports on those from his end, and I think we're in a concerted and voiced, unified voice in that. But there's an obligation that I feel that we owe to you guys is, my deputies do traffic stops in your community. My deputies serve search warrants. My deputies work with your officers, and public safety is not only important, but it's also one of those that kind of, if not done correctly, can be, can be an issue within our communities. And obviously, I feel that we're doing the best that we can, and we're working closely with your chief and his staff. But there's always areas for improvement, and I feel over the last four or five years, we've made great strides of improvement in the fact of how we're working together, saving taxpayer funds. But we're also making better, better informed decisions, but we're making headway in disrupting criminal activity in and throughout all of Navajo County. So with that, we'll stick with what we've always done. We have a short presentation. Chief Deputy Brian Swanney will give that presentation, the resident of your community, so I figured he'd be the best to give that. And then we also have Wiley Williams. He's our task force commander that, one of your, you have, one of your employees that is assigned to his task force. If you have any questions, any of us would be more than happy to answer that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian to give a brief presentation.
Sheriff, before you leave, thank you for doing that. I know you said the last three or four, five years, but we appreciate that. Some of the, some of the reports that we're going to hear kind of shock a lot of us up here that don't get to see that end. So I know, I could probably speak for all of us up here. We appreciate you doing that every year, and please continue, because it's nice to know what's going on in the county. You're right. We probably know a lot that's going on in the city, but it's nice to know what's going on with you guys too. So, thank you.
Yeah, and the city of Cholo has been a big part of that as far as these operations. I know there's many, many calls that we get called to assist Cholo, but we also ask Cholo and all their surrounding jurisdictions to do it, to help us. And it truly is one mission throughout Navajo County with the five municipalities and the sheriff's office. We've had some great successes recently in the last three years where we've brought in some funding. I think Brian will talk a little bit about it. We're now receiving a million dollars from a state appropriation to help fund the operations of MCAT, which in turn, we're very proud of the enforcement actions we have been able to do. But look at the budget relief that it's had on not only us, but on the cities. And now we're funding a lot of those positions at a much higher rate than we ever had. And with that, I have to commend Wiley. Lieutenant Williams, we'll give.
Still Wiley.
Still Wiley, okay.
Still Wiley.
The amount of return on investment from that has been tremendous over the last five years, and it's just getting better. And the city of Cholo's been with us every step of the way. Chief Provost and his team have been very, very good supporters of the direction the sheriff's office keeps wanting to lead within the county of securing these types of grants, and then coming back and asking for them to join and to work with us on that. And that's why I feel not only, hey, we're working in your town, we're doing law enforcement in your town, but we're also asking your town to come join us and to work on these things. So with that, turn it over to one of your residents. Hopefully, it isn't to cause the problems, but.
Do we need to start the clock, or?
Would you please?
We put that out there for you.
Yeah, just for me, just for me. Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council staff, thank you very much again for this opportunity to come, to stand before you. And there's not a, there's not a whole lot I'd like to talk about. I like talking about old shippy trucks, but there's probably the most, most I enjoy talking about is law enforcement. It's all I've ever done in my entire life. But we're going to talk again about, I don't know why I'm reading this. I can look at it right here. I was giving instructions a minute ago. Along the partnerships that the sheriff was talking about, you know, our criminal investigations are, you know, work very, very close together. They're kind of combined with one another a little bit. And our sergeant is housed right next door to your criminal investigation sergeant. We have detectives sitting right next to your detectives in the same facility, just down, just down the street. And in addition, do we have, you know, the drug task force detective attached to MCAT. So just that crossover back and forth is just, the networking and the information flow is just priceless, quite frankly. And obviously, then also with the White Mountain Special Response Team, you know, that's a joint operation throughout two counties. I don't think anybody's from, in Apache County, on the, on the team right at this moment. But that's a collective effort of shared services, shared expense, shared liability. And the need for that is certainly, certainly here nowadays. Dispatch communications, as the sheriff spoke about, you know, we're not sitting in the same room right this minute, but there's a capability for the dispatchers in Cholo to drive to Holbrook and plug into that dispatch center and vice versa in the event that there had to be an evacuation or, you know, a hazmat issue along the railroad track in Holbrook or a major outage or something like that in Cholo. We have configured this to where they can dispatch for the whole county from either center. And we couldn't have done that without the support and the leadership that your chief of police has brought to the table. And then also MCAT, which we'll talk about here. For 2023, there's a, there's a list of comparison there in front of you on that slide. The methamphetamine, as you can see, from '23 to '24, really, really jumped up. You're also going to see that our fentanyl pills are down quite a bit. We're still over a million fentanyl pills, but we're down about, about 800,000 from the year before. But in turn, see what you got with the methamphetamine. This just is, this is just another fact, another, another example of how the cartel is controlling this commodity. The commodity is drugs. The customer is U.S. citizens, and the cartel is, 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 got a business model. I don't know that I understand the business model, but that's what they're doing. They start restricting the, they start cutting back on the flow of fentanyl, and they up the methamphetamine and back and back. I don't understand the drug business, which is probably good, because I might be in the wrong business, but I'm kidding. But it's, you can see how, how they have changed stuff around. Cocaine, 180 pounds in 2024 compared to 130 grams in 2023. So this is all manipulated. The flow of drugs into our country and through our state is controlled by, by the cartel. And then we just end up seizing what we can seize as it comes through. So. Let's go over the next one here. Just some proactive statistics from the, from the task force. We were down just slightly in overall physical arrests from '23 to '24, which really doesn't mean a whole heck of a lot. Just, there was just a few that were not, a few less arrested. But, but agency assists were way up, over 100 over, providing assistance to other agencies. DTOs means drug trafficking organization. And a drug trafficking organization can be a El Chapo-style huge organization, or it could be three or more people selling and having a network of receiving drugs, processing the drugs, and selling the drugs. So it can be, a DTO is basically, could be a three-person, a three-person deal or a multifaceted, you know, TV Cenoloan type of thing. But that's what the team targets here locally is to interrupt those drug trafficking organizations within our community, right, that are set up right here, the drug dealers. They're right here in our communities. There are search warrants that they serve right about the same, a little bit higher, both with the residential and with vehicles. MCAT arrests, just a pie chart there, you know, Mayor, that helps, helps you understand that there was a little bit more last year than this year.
Directing that to me, I see.
Yeah, I'm just preempting that, because I know I'm.
Before you go any farther, can you go back one?
Sure.
So the vehicles, do you guys auction those off? What, what is your plan with them?
So this.
That's a lot of vehicles, is why I was asking.
This is going to be search warrants served on vehicles.
Oh, it's not.
Not seizures.
Okay, okay.
So we, we have information that there's, there's drugs or drug trafficking involved with that vehicle, and we'll write a search warrant to be able to search that vehicle.
Then take it.
And potentially take it, yes. But with the, with the laws that changed, with the state legislation that changed back in 2021, it makes it very, very difficult for that historic asset forfeiture, that asset seizure that, you know, used to take place years ago. We have dropped, you're spinning me off into a different direction here, but we're probably 70%, 80% reduction in, in actual asset forfeitures post-2021 than we were 2020 and prior, just because of the law changes.
If I didn't spin you off, you would think I was mad at you, so.
MCAT agency assists, you can kind of see there just a graph of what, you know, where a lot of the effort is put. You know, Cholo PD, having a task force member on, on, from Cholo PD on the, on the task force, creates that communication flow. Detective Hall swings into the police department, finds out what, what's, what's going on. What are the, what is the hot topic for the day, or, you know, what, what's going on on graveyard shift or what have you? And then takes that information back to the team, and then they start prioritizing on what they're going to start targeting. If there's a peak in burglaries in the area, then they can kind of start looking at that, because it all ties back to drugs at the end of the day anyways. You can see DPS is high there. That's a, part of the, part of the joining into is we've gotten back into a, a, more of a formal partnership with the Department of Public Safety. Back in 2014, there was a separation between DPS Criminal Investigations and Navajo County MCAT. Kind of went through separate directions. There was some leadership conflict back then. We have now brought that back across, rejoined into a partnership. In fact, the MCAT, all of MCAT employees, to include the lieutenant and the sergeant, have a desk and workspace at the DPS facility right over here off of, off of McNeil. So that's the, that's the MCAT South facility is at the DPS building, which has been a great, a great partnership. So just a couple of stories, you know, we like to tell stories here, but this first one, this first one here in May, this was initiated by the Cholo PD detective, Detective Hall. This was his case. He started it from zero and generated this case. Ultimately, arrested an individual that lives over near the Cholo Middle School, who was selling and transporting illegal narcotics here in the White Mountain area. They were able to, to conduct a traffic stop that resulted in 7,300 fentanyl pills, right here in Cholo, being sold right near Cholo Middle School. So as we've talked, you know, you guys have heard all the drug stories, 7,300 pills, that could potentially be 7,300 deaths. We don't know. But there's really no number to put on that. But, but that type of seizure on drugs that were destined to be sold in this community was a huge deal. And that is 100% initiated by the detective that the city of Cholo provides to the team. This suspect was sentenced to seven years of intense probation. Maybe it could have been a little bit higher, but there also could have never been, he may not have had any sort of criminal history as well. This may have been the first time this individual was arrested. In April, MCAT detectives, this is, this, this goes to show the networking and how important networking is. In, in April, MCAT detectives receive information from a detective in Louisiana that there was a subject in Snowflake selling cocaine. Probably thinking, how, how does this? As people travel and go from one place to another, and they get caught in Louisiana, they maybe started talking and started providing some information to those detectives, who then in turn reached out to our drug task force, and they started working that. They had made, out of that investigation, four arrests so far, just under a pound of cocaine, $8,700 cash and four weapons. The main subject is now serving three and a half years in the Department of Corrections. I would tend to say that this individual, based on the sentencing, probably had a history in the, in the drug sales business. But this does, case does show the importance of that, of that networking and that interaction between work groups across the country. In July, our Criminal and Addiction Unit, basically it's a K-9 unit that's attached underneath MCAT as well, made a traffic stop up on I-40 near Sun Valley. During the course of the stop, K-9 Kilo was deployed and led to a search. The 114 pounds of methamphetamine that was seized has an estimated street value of over $2 million. 114 pounds of methamphetamine. That is a lot, and they sell it by the gram. Total three arrests were made, and all three are pending court, court processes. And that was K-9 Kilo, I don't know if you guys noticed, but we just ended up retiring K-9 Kilo. He had his big send-off, was a couple weeks ago, and we got a new one. His name is Jax, J-A-X, and him and his handler are at, at training right now, learning how to work together. In June, another K-9 unit stop on I-40 near Holbrook resulted in counterfeit M-30 pills weighing 82 pounds. It's approximately 371,000 pills. The estimated street value on those is $1.8 million, $1.8 million of fentanyl pills. This individual is still sitting in the Navajo County jail and is awaiting the court process. And here's just a couple of photos of some, of some drugs and money that has been seized as a result of the investigations being conducted by the detectives. As you can see in the picture on the left, there's a, there's a rifle in there and lots of, lots of magazines, lots of money, lots of dope. And then there's a picture of the 82 pounds of fentanyl. You know, it's so small. You know, you have 82 pounds of marijuana, and that's going to take up a whole bed of your pickup truck. You got 82 pounds of, of fentanyl here, and it'll fit in the backseat. And the shopping cart did not come as a part of the investigation, but to move the drugs from one spot in the evidence room to the other, we ended up putting it in the shopping cart. But that's what 114 pounds of methamphetamine looks.
Is that Kilo?
That is Kilo, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Guys, that's all I have at this point in time. And again, I'll repeat, there's, there's, it makes me extremely proud to stand up here before you all and talk to you about the detectives on this, on this team. When we're all in bed, they're out running around at night. I get notified in the morning, oh, hey, by the way, we won't be in today, because we just got home and the sun's coming up. Because they get on, they get onto a target, they follow it. They don't stop until there's nowhere else to go, or they come to a solution. I have, in my 33 years of doing this job, it is, I don't know that I've run into a group of people that are attached to this team that have the commitment and dedication that they do to include, obviously, to include the detective that the city of Cholo provides. So I just want to applaud them, and I love getting up here in front of you guys and talking about what MCAT's done. They make us very proud. So with that, I have no further, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions or, or if you want to throw anything.
Thank you. Like I said before, I hope you keep coming back, and I always, I always see your posts when you guys make these arrests. And I go, how come people don't realize to stay out of Navajo County?
I.
I don't think they're ever going to get it, but some of the arrests that you guys post, it just amazes me, and I know there's some in our community, I-40 is pretty popular, but I think these dogs are absolutely amazing. So you retired him before the other one was ready, or is Kilo kind of part-time right now?
Well, Kilo is retired. He's retired, he's enjoying his kennel in Joseph City, but the handler is with the new dog that we just got, and they're down at training. So it's, I think it's ten weeks? So it's a ten-week training, and then they'll come back and go to work.
Like I said, we appreciate you guys coming every year. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to tell Chief Swanee and the sheriff, thank you from the citizens of Sholo. Obviously, Chief Swanee is a member of the community, but we put a high priority on our law enforcement here in our community, and we appreciate the partnership. I want to also take this opportunity to thank Chief Provost for making that a priority. I know that throughout the time I've been on the council, the relationships have not always been the strongest. I feel like they're probably at the strongest they've ever been, and so that's a testament to the leadership of the sheriff and to Chief Provost making that, you know, making that a priority, because I feel like partnerships are, they're a prerequisite to being successful in law enforcement in rural Arizona. And if you don't have those partnerships, then you're not going to be near as successful because we are, you know, limited in our resources and stuff like that. And so I want to thank all of you gentlemen for making that a priority and making our community safer, because it is, we feel we live in a very safe, vibrant community because of what you and your teams do, and so thank you both for coming today and let us know. And thank you, Chief, for the work that you and your team do to make sure that that relationship works in an effective manner. And also, I want to tell Lieutenant Wiley for all the work he does. Him and his team are phenomenal. They're tops in the state. You go to HIDA, and you listen and hear some of the war stories, and our team is second to none throughout the state, so thank you.
I was surprised you didn't want to talk, Wiley. So they just brought you for eye candy?
Yeah, easy eye candy, all the time.
Good. Welcome anytime. Thank you guys very much for everything. Okay, next item on the agenda is consent calendar, where I entertain a motion for consideration of Resolution Number R-2025-10, authorizing Sholo Police Department to submit an application. Arizona State Parks, consideration of acceptance of Nicholas Homestead Park, consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting on February 18th, 2025. Got a motion by the vice mayor, second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda is new business. It's a public hearing, consideration of ordinance number 2025-02, amending zoning ordinance of the city, amending zoning map, change zoning on portion APN 212-07005C from R-27, single-family multiple. A lot of reading for one eyeball. Residential seven thousand square foot to C-2 general commercial submitted by White Mountain Bible Church. Mr. Tregaskis.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. At its regular meeting of February 25th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to approve the zone change request submitted by White Mountain Bible Church for property located at 3171 East Sholo Lake Road, more particularly described as a portion of APN 21207005C, subject to specified conditions. Those conditions were, all developments shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local requirements. Based on this commission action, this request would change the current R-27, single-family and multifamily residential, seven thousand square feet zoning to C-2 or general commercial. Purpose of this request is to expand the existing White Mountain Bible Church facilities. This portion of the subject property was rezoned from AR-43, agricultural residential, forty-three thousand square feet, to R-27 through ordinance number 2007-10 to allow for seventy condominiums on the subject property. The applicant has submitted conceptual plans showing a proposed building site for a new sanctuary, as well as additional parking and future athletic and sports fields on the subject property. Schools, public or private elementary and high schools, colleges, and universities, as well as places of worship, fraternal and social facilities, meeting halls, and similar uses are considered a permitted use in the C-2 zoning district. The applicant sent letters to all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property outlining the nature of the request. No objection to the proposal was received. Property was advertised and posted in accordance with requirements. Staff received one phone call from an area resident with general questions related to the request. No objections were received. With that, staff as well as the applicant are available for questions. This has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Mr. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Seeing nobody run, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to the council. Do you have any questions or comments?
Question?
So where the buildings are now, that's already C-2?
Correct.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Anybody else? Anybody else? By unanimous consent, I have the city clerk read ordinance number 2025-02 by title, since all council members have.
Thank you, Mayor and council. City of Sholo, ordinance number 2025-02, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Navajo County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, amending the zoning map, changing the zoning on a portion of APN 212-07005C from R-27, single-family and multifamily residential, seven thousand square feet, to C-2 general commercial submitted by White Mountain Bible Church.
Any other vice mayor?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-02.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. That's pretty exciting, Mr. Frenow. It's nice to see you guys building out there. It's really exciting. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of applications submitted by Sunshine Brewer on behalf of Sholo Chamber of Commerce for a special event liquor license for the 2025 Sholo Days on June 13th and 14th, 2025 at Frontier Field. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Sunshine Brewer, representing the Sholo Chamber of Commerce, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 2025 Sholo Days at Frontier Fields, scheduled for June 13th and 14th, 2025. The license will allow the Sholo Chamber of Commerce to sell alcohol during this event. An existing six-foot chain link fence surrounds Frontier Fields where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. One entrance exit gate will be open for participants to enter and leave the area. It will be staffed by security personnel provided by Arizona Rangers to ensure no alcoholic beverages enter or leave the fenced-in premises. The Arizona Rangers will also roam the field to provide additional security when available. The northeast corner of Frontier Fields will house the kids' zone, and no alcohol will be allowed in that area. The Sholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. The application and action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control. And unlike regular liquor licenses, the council's decision is final for such an application, and the applicant is here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions for the applicant? Comments? Motions? Councilman Clark?
I got a question for Sunshine. Could you have found a map that makes our area look any more drier? I mean, I know we're in fire restrictions, but that thing is just brown, right? I'm like, we have grass on that field, right? Like, did we pull that up?
Not really.
Okay. I'll move to approve the application submitted by Sunshine Brewer for a special event liquor license for the 2025 Sholo Days on June 13th and 14th, 2025, at the Frontier Fields, Sholo, Arizona.
Make sure I got a motion, got a second by Councilman Whipple. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of an application submitted by Darius Gibbons on behalf of Mountain of Hope Foundation for a special event liquor license for 2025 Medieval Mayhem Renaissance Fair on July 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2025, at Frontier Fields. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Darius Gibbons, representing the Mountain of Hope Foundation, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 2025 Medieval Mayhem Renaissance Fair at Frontier Fields, scheduled for July 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2025. The license will allow the Mountain of Hope Foundation to sell alcohol during the event. An existing six-foot chain link fence surrounds Frontier Fields where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. One entrance and exit gate will be open for participants to enter and leave the area. This gate will be staffed by at least four and up to ten uniformed security personnel provided by the Navajo County Sheriff's Auxiliary and Arizona Rangers to ensure no alcoholic beverages enter or leave the fenced-in premises. Along with the Arizona Rangers, the Sheriff's Auxiliary will roam the field to provide additional security when available. The Sholo Police Department performed a background check on the applicant and found nothing that would preclude approval of this special event liquor license. And then the application and action taken by the council will be forwarded to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, and the applicant is here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any questions or comments or motions? Councilman Jed?
Motion. I move to approve the application submitted by Darius Gibbons for a special event liquor license for the 2025 Medieval Mayhem Renaissance Fair on July 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2025, at the Frontier Fields.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I was kind of looking at that picture, and did you see how beautifully green she turned in? Sunshine, you might want to ask if you could borrow her picture. All righty. Next item on the agenda is, this is the Mrs. Rachel Hall show.
You're not used to being in a courtroom. Mayor, I'm going to declare a conflict for the items D, E, F, and G. I have multiple family members who are under consideration, and knowing how everything kind of works, I'm just going to abstain from all four of those.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I also declare a conflict with the planning zoning one.
Okay, just the one? Okay. All right, consideration of appointment of the Sholo Planning and Zoning Commission. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The terms of three Planning and Zoning Commission members, Josh Adams, Zachary Barlow, and Doug Roberts, will expire at the end of March. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying, and all three incumbents, Josh Adams, Zachary Barlow, and Doug Roberts, submitted letters of interest. Per policies, city staff advertised the vacancies and received three new applications from Brandon Clark, Kevin Coogler, and Jody Whitehead. The three new applicants were interviewed by council prior to this meeting tonight, and then attached, you've all been given a ballot of all six applicants. Council members are asked to mark their three choices on the ballot for individuals they wish to appoint. Once you're done, if you'll pass those back down to me, I'll tally up the results and let you know the three individuals with the most votes, and then a formal motion may be made based on those results. Okay, Mayor, with the, we do have a tie for the third place, but for the top two applicants, we have Josh Adams and Zachary Barlow, and so we'll do another round of votes between the last two that have tie votes. So if you all will do another round and decide between Brandon Clark and Doug, sorry, Doug Roberts. Mayor and council, after both rounds of votes, the three with the most votes are Josh Adams, Zachary Barlow, and Brandon Clark.
Thank you.
Formal motion can be made, please.
Entertain a motion to appoint the three?
Still moved.
You can make the, I don't want to make the motion.
Okay. I move to appoint Josh Adams, Zachary Barlow, and Brandon Clark to the Planning and Zoning Commission for terms expiring in March 2029.
Got a motion, need a second? I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. It's kind of nice when we put that out there. We had six very qualified people for planning and zoning with only three openings, so it's nice to see that we have people getting involved. I love it. Sometimes we have to do this, and we get nothing, so it's nice that people are getting involved. So thank you all that applied. All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of the Aviation Advisory Committee. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The terms of three members of the five-member Aviation Advisory Committee will expire at the end of March. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying, and all three incumbents were not interested in continuing to serve on the committee. Per policy, staff advertised the vacancies and received four new applications from Patrick Crew, Donald Luce, Don Lusk, and David Murray. The council interviewed the three of the applicants. Donald Luce was unavailable for an interview tonight. Resolution Number R-2017-4, approved by the council in February of 2017, outlines the requirements of the Aviation Advisory Committee. The resolution stipulates that all committee members must reside in Navajo County with a majority living within the Sholo City limits. In addition, the council's preference, though not a requirement, is that at least two pilots serve on the committee as well. Showing the chart that you guys all received of the status of residency and pilot and non-pilot status of the four applicants, one, Patrick Crew, was a non-resident but a pilot. Donald Luce is a resident and a non-pilot. Don Lusk is a resident and a pilot, and David Murray is a resident and a non-pilot. Of the current standing committee members, John Hannah is a resident and a non-pilot, and Gary Winslow is a resident and a pilot, and three of the four new applicants were residents. So therefore, the committee's residency requirement is, will be met. And then again, council members were given ballots to appoint. You are to mark three choices for the individuals that you wish to appoint, and then I will tally the results and let you know for a formal motion. Mayor, with the three top applicants with the most votes are Patrick Crew, Don Lusk, and David Murray.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Bring it back to the council for a motion, or vice mayor?
I move to appoint Patrick Crew, Don Lusk, and David Murray to the Aviation Advisory Committee with a term expiring in March 2029.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Jed. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members. Mrs. Hall.
All right, I'm almost done. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of three Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee members, Stephen Hare, Becky Clark, and Don Hall, will expire at the end of March. Again, staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying, and two incumbents, Becky Clark and Don Hall, submitted letters of interest. Per policy, city staff advertised the vacancy and received one new application from Jody Whitehead. Staff recommends appointing Becky Clark, Don Hall, and Jody Whitehead to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for terms expiring March twenty-twenty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Bring it back to the council for a motion. Councilman Adams.
I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Becky Clark, Don Hall, and Jody Whitehead to the Sholo Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the term ending in March twenty-two thousand twenty-nine.
Thank you. Got a motion? Need a second? Second by vice mayor. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion, motion passed unanimously. Thought you said you were almost done.
Oh, last one.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment of Board of Adjustment members. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of two Board of Adjustment members will expire at the end of March. Both seats are for term, four-year terms. Staff contacted the incumbents to gauge their interest in reapplying, and both incumbents, John Jarrett and John Hannah, submitted letters of interest. Per policy, city staff advertised vacancies and did not receive any applications from new applicants. Staff recommends appointing John Jarrett and John Hannah to the Sholo Board of Adjustment for terms ending March of twenty-twenty-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Look to the council for questions or a motion. Vice mayor, you're on a roll.
I move to appoint John Jarrett and John Hannah to the Sholo Board of Adjustments for terms ending March twenty-twenty-nine.
Got a motion? I'll second it. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hall. We'll move on from you from here. Welcome back.
Thanks.
Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of award of professional service contract to Ironside Engineering and Development, Inc., for Savage Sewer Replacement Project Phase Two, City of Sholo, Project Number S sixty-five twenty-five. Mr. Hampshire.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Savage Sewer Replacement Project is a capacity improvement for the sewer trunk line between Olender Road and the city's wastewater treatment plant located on Sixth Street. Earlier this year, the first phase of the project was recently completed. The second phase of the project remains to be completed and will include the installation of approximately twenty-six hundred linear feet of new twenty-four-inch sewer main and seven polymer manholes. An additional eight hundred feet of eight-inch sewer main with three manholes may also have to be replaced due to the depth of the improvements required. City staff solicited a proposal from Ironside Engineering to provide the necessary design services. The scope of the proposal includes conducting the required project survey and mapping, preparing construction design documents, researching and developing alternative construction methods to deal with the increased depth, obtaining ADQ approvals to construct, destruction staking, and the completion of record drawings. The proposed cost for these services is a hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. A detailed scope of services is attached. Staff recommends awarding the professional services contract for the design of the Savage Sewer Replacement Project Phase Two, City of Sholo, Project Number S sixty-five twenty-five, to Ironside Engineering Development, Inc., in an amount not to exceed that one hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars. Scope of services is attached with an aerial map, and I'm here for any questions.
Replacement, correct?
Replacement.
But has to be engineered.
Yes.
It's already there.
It's there. It's small. We're going bigger.
Okay.
We're also going to have to look at some alternative construction methods, because this is the sewer in the city that is, it's over thirty feet deep. So there's some options and some different options, different construction methods we may entertain, including the specs, so we can bid that and get that as an option.
Okay. And just curious, the picture doesn't show where, it shows where it comes out on Sixth Street, but where's the cemetery from there? Out of curiosity, is it south of, of the picture?
Yeah, it's south. See, just on the, just on the southern tip of that picture there.
Oh, okay.
Probably about a quarter mile south, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Or motions? Councilman Whipple.
I move to award the professional services contract for the design of Savage Sewer Replacement Project Phase Two, City of Sholo, Project Number S sixty-five twenty-five, to Ironside Engineering and Development, Inc., in an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Got a motion? Need a second? Got a second by councilman Adams. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of rejection of bids for the Reedhead House Restoration Phase One, City of Sholo, Project Number FM fifty-two twenty-five. Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice mayor and council. Reedhead House, constructed in nineteen twelve, is the last standing residential structure of this period in Sholo. Is an original homestead built by the Reedhead family, one of the city's founders, and was continuously occupied until the city acquired it in October twenty-twenty-one. The home was acquired to preserve this historic home and its unique characteristics for future generations. On completion of the renovation, the home will be open for public tours facilitated by the Sholo Museum. Repairs have been made to the foundation. Measures have also been taken to protect the foundation from water infiltration. This included replacing rain gutters and rerouting flood irrigation away from the building. The city has applied for and received grant funding to start the process of restoring the building. To this end, the city prepared a request for qualifications and selected Motley Design Group LLC to develop a historic building preservation plan and assess the structure to determine eligibility for nomination to the National Register. Motley has prepared building condition assessment. The report included three categories of improvements: critical, serious, and minor. Staff presented the report to the, with the architect's recommendations to the city council at a study session on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. Council directed staff to move forward with the critical priority work items. The work includes repairing cracks in the adobe walls, foundations, and brick wall. The work also includes repairing plaster, adjusting door and window frames, reinstalling pine plank floors, and reinstalling plumbing and wiring to code. The city's budget for this work is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In January two thousand and five, staff advertised Reedhead House Restoration Phase One, City of Sholo, Project Number FM fifty-two twenty-five, per statutory requirements. Two bids were received on February twenty-first, twenty-five. The bids are as follows. Captive construction and preservation, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. GNG Specialty Contractors, six hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. Both bids exceeded the city's budget. There were also other issues with the submittals. Because of these issues, staff is proposing to reduce the scope of work and rebid the project. Staff recommends rejecting all bids for the Reedhead House Restoration Phase One, City of Sholo, Project Number FM fifty-two twenty-five. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Sir, yeah, I, I get it when we reject some of these bids, but can you kind of just explain what, what's next? Well, I mean, I get it that it's, obviously, we only have so much, and it's, one of them's twice, three times as much, almost.
So the, the biggest cost of the project was the crack repair, and the way that the architect directed the contracts to bid that was to remove the plaster twelve inches either side of the crack, and then remove any cracked adobe. These are adobe walls. And then either, either build new adobe bricks or purchase them. I think there's only one guy in New Mexico that you could buy these from. So they either make them on-site, or they purchase them, go back in, reinstall the adobe, and then replaster the balls. So what staff's thoughts on that are, just to bid the plaster repair, just the crack repair, so it would be the plaster and the adobe, and that should get us pretty close to what the budget is, what, what we have in our budget to do that work. The other work we have considered, we've got some real craftsmen that work at Public Works as far as reinstalling the flooring and taking care of some of the trim and things like that. We may bid some of that work, too, but I think there's an option that we can take advantage of our resources that actually work for the city.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
I move to reject all bids for the Reedhead House Restoration Phase One, City of Sholo, Project Number FM dash fifty-two twenty-five.
Got a motion? Got a second by councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cup. Appreciate that. That house is still awesome looking. Okay, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Everybody down there? I guess I can report going down to the state Capitol a couple times in the past week and testifying in front of a couple of committees. I know councilman Adams went, and there's some pictures of him getting a, you can see his face turning red by what some of these politicians are doing and saying, but it's a, it's quite an experience when they tell you one thing and then they go to vote and do something different. So we're experiencing it together, but there's literally a, one of the mayors in, in our community, because a bunch of us went down there, but they had a picture of him testifying, and in the back was councilman Adams, and he's just red. And it looks like he's ready to jump up. I don't know what he was thinking, but.
The guy wasn't being there.
He was sitting right next to the city manager, and it just stood out when you seen the crowd, and you see one person mad. I mean, it was like, but there's a lot of exciting things happening for our community that, that was well worth the trip down there the last couple of times to testify. So it was, it was a good experience, and, and like I said, a lot of exciting things happening in our community soon. I know the city manager probably go over this, but stage, stage one fire restrictions, and don't call the fire department and look for a burn permit, or ask if you can burn. Walk outside. I, I, I don't, I know they're not issuing any, any anyway, but if it's, if it's breezy out there, don't waste their time, please, and just be careful, and please report. There's a few things that happened the last month that neighbors aren't reporting neighbors. I mean, come on. It's our community, we have to report. So unfortunately, you can go tell them, but if they're a neighbor that doesn't want to hear from you, then, then make the appropriate calls. But you can see what happened in St. John's, I believe, yesterday. I think it started out as just a fire in the ditch, and I think it ended up sixty-plus acres, something like that. So we all know it's dry. We live here year-round. I mean, you could tell by looking at our trees that are supposed to be green, and they're like a dingy yellow. Me and the city manager, we, when we traveled down to the valley, even the cactus are praying for rain. I mean, they're sad. They're, they're yellow, and it's, you know, we used to have green cactus, but we don't have that anymore. But please, please obey all the laws and be ready. Again, we've, we've been, we've been talking about this for a couple of months now. Just be ready. We pray every day that we get more moisture and we don't have to set or go. It's a sad thing when you have to leave your community, and I, I'd never want to do it again, so. Anyway, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with that, there is information on our stage one fire restrictions on our social media and the website. There's two opportunities for citizens to learn more about how they can be prepared. One is next week on March twelfth, from ten-thirty AM to noon, here at City Council Chambers. There's a community wildfire preparedness presentation. The fire department will be there. We invite any residents that want to learn more about wildfire prevention, preparedness, and how to ready your family and home to attend to that event. There's also one on March twenty-ninth, from eleven AM to two, up at the White Mountain, or, sorry, at the Blue Ridge High School. It's called the White Mountain Wildfire Preparedness Expo, and that's at twelve-hundred West White Mountain Boulevard in Lakeside. So there's some opportunities there to learn more about how you can be better prepared for you and your families as we approach this season. In public works projects, we are still working on our sunken manhole project, and then work is also going to begin on March tenth on the Eleventh Street sidewalk improvements over here on the east side of, from Hall to Hewing. So we thank our citizens for their patience as we do those projects. And last, I'd just like to thank Doug Roberts, served on P and Z for many years. Appreciate you, Doug, for that, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, city manager. Anybody need seconds? First, scheduling meetings.
Have our regular council meeting on the eighteenth.
Alrighty. Thank you, guys, very much for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you, council, and I see no more visits for this council during this meeting.